I ask to look at over the minutes from the previous regular session of April 9, 2019. We'll ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion on the board to approve the minutes of the regular session of April 9. It's been properly seconded. Will approved by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. We need approval of the minutes of the special call meeting of April 23, 2019. We'll ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
I make a motion.
Second. Just a second, I'm sorry, okay. We have a motion on the board to approve special call meeting minutes for April 23, 2019. It's been properly seconded. Questions to the motion. If hearing none, will approved by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Have on the agenda number four, the Proclamations on Recognition of Citizens by the Mayor and Alderman. I have a proclamation I'd like to read for National Children's Mental Health Awareness Day, which was May 6, 2019. Partnering for Help and Hope focuses on the importance of integrating behavioral health and primary care for children, youth, and young adults with mental and/or substance use disorders. Whereas, addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is fundamental to the future of the city of Newport, Tennessee. And whereas, the need of comprehensive coordinated mental health services for children, youth, young adults, and families places upon our community a critical responsibility. And whereas, it is appropriate that a day should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts towards our children's mental health and well-being. And whereas, Tennessee Voices for Children through its unique approach to serving children, youth, young adults, and young adults with mental health or substance abuse disorders is effectively caring for the mental health needs of children, youth, young adults, and their families in our community. And now, therefore, I, Mayor Roland A. Dykes III, of the City of Newport, do hereby proclaim May 6, 2019, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. And call upon all citizens of Newport, Tennessee, and organizations interested in meeting every child's mental health needs to unite on this day in the observance of such exercises that will acquaint the people of Newport, Tennessee with the fundamental necessity of a year-round program for children, youth, young adults with mental health and their families. In witness hereof, I have here to set my hand and fix the seal of the City of Newport, Tennessee, the sixth day of May, 2019. Vice Mayor Prophet has someone has some recognition he'd like to observe.
You know, as somebody in the community all the time, you sort of see that story going beyond what they need to do or have to do. And all of us, when it comes from one of us, it comes from all of Alderman and all the city officials. And we just sort of pick out somebody that has made a difference in our community. And this person, growing up sometime, had a little bit of rough time like the rest of us, but has come around and really helped kids, really done a lot of things for our community. And you'd have to be there to know what's going on. And Scotty Thornton is, I've sort of picked him out because I've seen too many things he's done and does for our school. I see what he does for kids. And I just wanted to tell you how much I, how proud I am of him. I know you've got some of your family here. And just wanted you to know, appreciate all of us, appreciate what you do, Scott. And we've just got a little certificate here for you, okay?
This is ready. The City of Newport recognizes Scotty Thornton for his dedication to community service. The City of Newport, Mayor and Alderman. Just want to say we appreciate what you did. This is loud and clear. Yeah, appreciate what you did. You get that, you're on the side of safety.
Thanks for making a difference in our use of this. We just all thank you for your charity. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, you're right.
Alderman, my counsel has some recognition he'd like to award.
I don't have any official proclamation, but I just wanted to remind the council and the public that this week, May 12 through the 18th, is National Police Week. Generally, on Wednesday, throughout the nation, that's recognized as Police Officer Memorial Day. If you have a flag in your front yard, you can raise that and that. It would be appropriate on city buildings and homes, if you have those, to loan those to half staff, and for the entire day tomorrow, then raise them back up. I'm gonna have to consult my sheet here a little bit. Last year, there were 163 police officers killed throughout the United States. One is too many, but unfortunately, it's just the nature of the beast and it's going to happen. Like I said, I wanted to remind everybody of that. Also, we were kind of remiss last month. We missed National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, but we did a semi unofficial recognition of that at their location last month. So, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is communications from the city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. The first thing I have on my agenda is we're happy to announce that the city has received a grant of around probably $58,000 to do Wi-Fi downtown, to make the entire downtown a hotspot. So anywhere that anybody is downtown with a device that's capable of getting on the internet, they'll be able to do that. And we hope that will help encourage growth downtown. Also, as most people probably have noticed, the paving is done over on Broadway. It seemed like it was a long time coming, but it is a nice smooth ride now, and we're happy that the state got it paved. We still like some of the markings that are supposed to come back. There's a different company does the markings that the state has that should be coming back. We anticipate any time to mark off the crosswalks and stop bars. Also, not really a big deal, but just for the record, it's Rocky's birthday. He had to come in and work today on his birthday because he had to videotape the meeting. So we appreciate him sacrificing his birthday to come in and document our meeting. That's all I have.
Should we sing "Happy Birthday" to Rocky?
Rocky, act like you ain't here. I'm praying.
Thank you, sir.
Next item on the agenda is appointments of boards, commissions, and committees. We do not have any. And reports from committees, members of council, and other officers. Only thing on the agenda is Tanner Preservation Alliance. Garrett, would you have anything you'd like to report on or Carleen? No? Okay, moving right along. Old business, unfinished business. We have none. Moving on to new business. First thing on the agenda for new business is consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2019-03, Budget Amendment for the City of Newport for fiscal year 2018-2019.
And Mayor, I'll read the caption of that ordinance into the record. It's ordinance number 2019-03, An Ordinance of Amending the Annual Operating Budget and Capital Program of the City of Newport, Tennessee, Fiscal Year 2018-2019.
And Mayor, just for the record, this will be the last budget amendment for this fiscal year. There will be a second reading at the June meeting and a public hearing prior to the meeting in case there's any questions or comments about the budget amendment.
We need a motion to approve this? We'll call for a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve the ordinance 2019-03, Budget Amendment for the City of Newport for fiscal year 2018-2019. It's been properly seconded. Question to the motion. Okay, if we have hearing none, will approved by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Item B, Consideration of First Reading of Ordinance Number 2019-04, Budget Amendment for Newport Grammar School for Fiscal Year 2018-2019.
And that is ordinance number 2019-04, An Ordinance of Amending the Annual Operating Budget and Capital Program of the City of Newport, Tennessee, Fiscal Year 2018-2019 for our Newport Grammar School.
Garrett, you've heard the reading of ordinance. We'll ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion on the board to approve. Questions to the motion. Hearing none, it's been properly seconded. Will approved by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
Hearing none, motion carries. Item C, Consideration of New Year's Eve Holiday.
Mayor, as most people probably know, last year, the federal government and the state of Tennessee added New Year's Eve as a holiday. The county also followed suit with that. You all, individually in discussions I had with you gentlemen during the course of the budget process, it was discussed, it was asked, is there something we could do? Since we're not doing a raise this year for employees, was there something we could do for the employees? And it was pretty much considered this would be a good thing we could do to help the employees and to add that holiday to the list of holidays that we observe. And especially considering that the federal government and the state and the county has already adopted that. And I feel like it would be prudent and fair for us to do that for our people also.
Okay, you've heard the consideration of New Year's Eve holiday?
I'll make a motion that we have New Year's Eve as a holiday.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board. Questions to the motion. If you have none, we'll ask for approval by a normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item D, Consideration of Health Insurance Options for City of Newport Employees.
Mayor, and seeing as you're here, if you have any specific questions, but I've talked to some, both of you, I've talked to individually, because you all have a lot of interest in the insurance this year for the employees. The problem arose that United Healthcare no longer accepted to know the hospitals into their planned services. And so, that was making hardship on our employees. And I know they were complaining to me, they were complaining to you gentlemen and ladies, and you all said that you felt like we needed to put it out the bid this year. And so, we did. What we got back is in your packet. United Healthcare came back and said they would hold their price if, and if they felt like they were close to making a deal, but who knows? You know, that's two birds in the bush. We had bids from Humana and from Blue Cross Blue Shield. They were very similar, but Blue Cross Blue Shield, with it, it goes to a $3,000 deductible versus what we have currently, which is a $2,500. And Humana maintains the $2,500. Now, the major change between Humana and the Blue Cross Blue Shield and our current policy with United Healthcare is that outpatient, what's considered outpatient surgery, and a very common example of that would be going to a dermatologist, but not the only, but that'd be the most common, is no longer covered by just the copay. It would be come under your deductible. And if I think I recall correctly, like a flu shot, with United Healthcare, healthcare flu shots were free, and with both Blue Cross Blue Shield and Humana, you had to pay $25... Oh, $5, I'm sorry? Yeah, $5. That's pretty much the major differences in it, simply. And so, it would be our recommendation, having met Tina and I and Missy with Cindy, it would be our recommendation that we go with Humana. It's, I think it's the low bid, but it also, it does not increase that deductible. And I just feel like we need to hold the line on that deductible, because that's a hardship on the employees when you gotta meet that $2,500 every year out of pocket. So we really feel strongly about holding the line on the deductible. But it's also lower, the lower to Humana is.
Biggest thing I like about it, because our hospital takes it, that's the biggest gripe that I had.
Right.
People having to travel to Knoxville or somewhere else all the time, at least we can keep it at home now.
Any other discussion? And Alderman, you have been of everything, so we will consider the motion to approve the low bid for Humana?
I make a motion to approve the low bid from Humana.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve the low bid for consideration of health insurance options for the City of Newport employees. It's been properly seconded. We call for the question. Hearing none, will approved by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item E, Consideration of First Reading of Ordinance Number 2019-05, City of Newport Adopting the Annual Budget for Fiscal Year 2019-2020.
Mayor, excuse me, I'll read the captions of that ordinance. It's ordinance number 2019-05, An Ordinance of the City of Newport, Tennessee, Adopting the Annual Operating and Capital Budget for the City of Newport and the Annual Budget for the Newport Grammar School and Tax Rate for Fiscal Year Beginning July 1, 2019 and Ending June 30, 2020.
Okay, we have, excuse me, we entertain a motion for consideration of first reading of ordinance number 2019-05, City of Newport Adopting the Annual Budget for Fiscal Year 2019-2020.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the board to adopt that ordinance, and it's been properly seconded. We call for any questions. Hearing none, will approved by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And I am opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. Item F, Consideration of State Highway Maintenance Contract Between the City of Newport and the State of Tennessee.
Mayor, being called prior to the meeting and said that he had had a kind of a minor emergency come up, said he would try to be here, but he didn't know if he'd make it or not. I told him if he did, I would speak up for him. The highway maintenance contract has been in place between us and the state of Tennessee since 1994. And basically what it does is it reimburses us for some things that we do already and then other things we take on, the patching of potholes on state highway inside the city, snow removal in the wintertime, and those kinds of things. And then, we build the state and they reimburse us for our time and the use of our equipment in doing those minor maintenance projects of on the state routes inside the city.
That contract remained pretty standard for all that time?
Yes. We keep trying to get them to go up a little, but they, it's held real constant on the reimbursement thing.
Okay, all right. You've heard the explanation, consideration of state highway maintenance contract between the City of Newport and the State of Tennessee. Will we entertain a motion to approve that contract?
I make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion on the board to approve this state highway maintenance contract between the City of Newport and the State of Tennessee. It has been properly seconded. We'll call for the question. Hearing none, will approved by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries. G, item G, Consideration of Authorizing the Mayor to Negotiate a New Contract for the City Administrator. I think most of you know that Mr., excuse me, City Administrator James Fincham, his contract is due to expire at the end of June, June 30, I believe. Is that correct?
It's the 1st of July.
1st of July, okay. So, we will need to negotiate a new contract. So, consideration of authorizing that and leaving that to myself and capable hands of Tina. So, we'll entertain a motion to approve that motion.
She got a motion right here.
Second.
We got it seconded. All right, we have a motion on the board to approve authorizing the mayor to negotiate a new contract for the city administrator. It's been properly seconded. Any questions? If not, will approved by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none, motion carries.
Mayor, I'd just like to say I thank everybody for the opportunity to work with them. I've enjoyed it, appreciate your confidence in asking me to stay, and I look forward to working with you and trying our best to keep moving you forward. It's been an honor and a blessing to have this position, and I'll continue to do my best job for you.
Hope you don't feel differently after we negotiate the contract.
Now you gonna make the work.
Mayor, I'd just like to say I think James and his staff are greatly responsible for us being in a better situation than we were in five years ago when we first came in here. I think they've done a fantastic job and helped me out.
I agree.
I agree, ditto.
Appreciate your team. We just ask you every week, but appreciate you all working with all your department heads and stuff, working the budget. They say everybody's good to work with.
They are, we agree.
Appreciate you all.
Okay, number 10, Bids, Purchases, and Expenses. Item A, It's Consideration of Bids for the Renovation of the Tanner Building Project.
Mayor, as everyone can see, we had four bids come in on the Tanner project, and it would be our recommendation that we go with the low bid by Prene Construction Company. Before, they had the lowest bid, and that would be our recommendation, if we go with them.
Heard the recommendation, will approve, look for a motion to approve?
A motion to approve the low bid.
I'll second it.
We have a motion on the board for consideration of bids for the renovation of Tanner Building Project and approving the low bid. It's been properly seconded. Call for a question. Hearing none, will approved by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Hearing none, motion carries.
Mayor, one thing, just to clarify for the record, they also bid on five options. Each company bid. And of those options, there was one, option one was to change the windows, and we chose not to do that. Option two was to add a canopy, we chose not to do that at this time. Option three is to, the way I understand it, is to fix the water line going across the parking lot, and we were gonna do that anyway, but they put that in the bid, that we thought we were gonna do that, but they put that in the bid here. Prene was not the lowest on that. They were actually the highest, but I don't know they were gonna need them to do that, because I thought we were gonna do that ourselves. So we'll have to look at that and see. I feel like we can do that ourselves, because there's a leak between the building and the tap, there's a leak underneath the parking lot. And I believe we can do that without making them do it. But we'll see when we get to it, if it's beyond our capabilities of pulling off.
Okay.
The only thing that we had looked at adding was the number five, was insulation between the outer walls, and we feel like that it needs to be insulated.
Right.
And so, Prene had the second to lowest bid on adding the insulation. But when you add that to it, there's still the lowest bid.
Yes.
So, she just, Tina needed that for the record.
Okay. Do we need to modify the motion?
I think so, to be on the safe side. I think we should, if we can amend your motion. Who made the motion?
I did.
Modified to include the insulation?
And water if we have to, but we think we can do it or so.
Okay, and to eliminate not to approve the windows and the canopy?
Yes.
Okay.
I modify my motion to accept the low bid with the express modifications. Could be good.
I'll second it again.
Okay, if it's been properly seconded, will approved by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
So keep it straight.
My wife needs to take her place in the bid.
Nobody keep it straight.
It's gonna take more than that. Comments from citizens?
Just glad to have the bounce tribe here. I've got several of them coming down with Scotty, but glad to have you all. If you had them all, you'd have to get Stokely's warehouse apart and put them all in, but glad to have you all here.
No comments from citizens?
Mayor, I was a little remiss. I told Chief Schultz I was gonna call on him to say a word or two. At least we...
I appreciate that, Mr. Ben. I just want to tell you all how much we appreciate you all recognizing us. As you know, in this world today, a policeman's not a very popular job. And if you compare that to when 9/11 happened, firemen and policemen were everybody's heroes. They all loved us. But last year, as Mr. Hansel said, we lost 163 officers in the line of duty. This year already, we've lost 42. And just as, I think it's kind of ironic, last year during the month of May, 22 officers lost their lives during Police Memorial Month. So, you know, it's not the popular job that it used to be, but I have to brag on my troops. My guys are fantastic, and they do a great job. And, you know, we're honored by your all's recognition and let you know we have a couple of bids coming up this week where people are honored. We'll do a little picnic for law enforcement, and they're hosting a meal for us tomorrow out of West End Baptist Church, and we truly appreciate your all's support.
Appreciate what you all do.
Thank you, Chief. Any other comments from citizens? I'd like to make one, I guess. I think most of you already know by now that my little brother, who has just named the head coach at Cock County High School, so I'm still wondering how he's gonna get it done, but I'm very proud of him, and I want you to know that there was no influence whatsoever from the mayor's office to get that done.
The shift is out.
Okay, if there's nothing else, no other comments from citizens, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been properly seconded. We will approve by the normal sign of aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. We are adjourned.